I'm in at 26, now the head of the town in Guam is back in session. We are now on item 18, consideration of the daily file. We will be... Senator Shelton, did you have a motion? Assistant Majority Leader Shelton, you are recognized.
Sadhus Massey, Madam Speaker, good afternoon to our colleagues. Notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we go back to motions.
There's a motion to go back to motions, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. We are back in motions. Senator Shelton, I believe I'm going to recognize Senator Sin Augustine first. Senator Sin Augustine, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place the nomination of Shannon J. Murphy to serve as member of the Guam Ethics Commission onto the session agenda.
On that motion, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sadhus Massey, Madam Speaker. I move to place on the session agenda Resolution Number 54-36COR authored by Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes, relative to respectfully petitioning the United States Congress to an act legislation removing the filing deadline for the Guam World War II Loyalty Recognition Act Claims Program.
Can you repeat the number?
This is Resolution Number 54-36COR.
On the motion to place Resolution 54-36 on the session agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I also move to place the nomination of Joseph D. Franquas to serve as a member classroom teacher of the Guam Educational Telecommunications Corporation, KGTF PBS Board of Trustees, on the session agenda.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Sadhus Massey. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place the nomination of Joseph M. Christostamo Jr. to serve as a member mixed martial arts representative of the Guam Unarmed Combat Commission onto the session agenda.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place the nomination of Justin P. Beneventi to serve as a member mixed martial arts representative of the Guam Unarmed Combat Commission onto the session agenda.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Sadhus Massey, Madam Speaker. I move to place the nomination of Christopher S. Murphy to serve as a member real estate broker representative of the Guam Real Estate Commission onto the session agenda.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Are there any other motions? Senator Sin Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to... Move to Bill 75-36COR as substituted by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing onto the session agenda?
On the motion to place Bill 75-36 on the session agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Sin Augustine, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I ask that Bill Number 164-36COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing be placed on the session agenda?
On the motion to place Bill 164-36 on the session agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Are there any other motions? Seeing no other motions, we are now on legislative concurrence. Senator Sin Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing, the nomination of Shannon J. Murphy, member of the Guam Ethics Commission, with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the motion, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no... Senator Blas? We're... We are on the motion to place in the voting file the nomination of Shannon J. Murphy. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sadhus Massey, Madam Speaker. And I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Public Accountability, Human Resources, the Guam Build-Up, Hagatia Revitalization, Regional Affairs, Public Libraries, Telecommunications, and Technology, the nomination of Joseph D. Franquas to serve as a member classroom teacher of the Guam Educational Telecommunications Corporation, KGTF PBS Board of Trustees, with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Environment, Revenue, and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics Research, and Planning, the nomination of Joseph M. Christostamo Jr. to serve as a member mixed martial arts representative of the Guam Unarmed Combat Commission, with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Environment, Revenue, and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics Research, and Planning, the nomination of Justin P. Beneventi to serve as a member mixed martial arts representative of the Guam Unarmed Combat Commission, with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Sadhus Massey, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Environment, Revenue, and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics Research, and Planning, the nomination of Christopher S. Murphy to serve as a member real estate broker representative of the Guam Real Estate Commission, with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We've concluded with legislative concurrences. Is there a motion to go to the voting file? To bypass second reading right now and go to the voting file? Go to third reading?
Madam Speaker, motion to go to the voting file?
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. So we are now on the consideration of the daily file. We will begin with the third reading. Bill Number 7-36COR. Clerk, please read the title.
Bill Number 7-36COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by V. Anthony Ada, Telo T. Taidegui, Joe S. Sin Augustine, Joanne Brown, Mary Camacho Torres, Sabina Flores Perez, Christopher M. Duñez, Jose Pito Terlahi, Frank Blas Jr., James C. Moylan. An act to add a new section 26203K, 38, to Article 2 of Chapter 26, and add a new section 28106I to Chapter 28, both of Title 11 Guam Code annotated, relative to exempting medical equipment and telemedicine technology from the business privilege tax and the use tax.
Senator Nelson?
Just like to make a motion to excuse members that are not present to vote today.
On the motion to excuse members who are not present, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Bill Number 7-36. We will proceed with roll call if there's no objection. Roll call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, pass. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, nay. Senator Sin Augustine. Senator Sin Augustine, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, pass. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, pass. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, pass. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, pass, nay. Bill Number 7-36COR received 12 ayes, two nays, and one excused. Bill Number 7-36COR is duly passed by the body. Bill Number 95-36LS, clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 95-36LS, as amended by the Committee on Air Transportation, Parks, Tourism, Higher Education, and the Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Amanda L. Shelton, Jose Pito Terlahi, Clinton E. Rogel, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Talina Cruz Nelson, V. Anthony Ada, James C. Moylan, Frank Blas Jr., Christopher M. Duñez, Telo T. Taidegui, Joanne Brown, Joe S. Sin Augustine, Mary Camacho Torres, Therese M. Terlahi. An act to amend Section 77104.1 of Article 1, Chapter 77, Title 21 Guam Code annotated, relative to including all peace officers in the enforcement of alcohol-free zones within the Guam territorial park system.
Roll call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator Sin Augustine. Senator Sin Augustine, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Bill Number 95-36LS received 14 ayes, zero nays, and one excused. Bill Number 95-36LS is duly passed by the body. Bill Number 36-36COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 36-36COR, as substituted by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, and amended on the floor. Introduced by Joe S. Sin Augustine, Therese M. Terlahi, Christopher M. Duñez, Telo T. Taidegui, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Amanda L. Shelton, Clinton E. Rogel, James C. Moylan, Joanne Brown, V. Anthony Ada, Frank Blas Jr., Jose Pito Terlahi. An act to authorize a commercial submerged land license agreement between the government of Guam, specifically the Tomorrowland Trust Commission, and TeleGuam Holdings LLC, doing business as GTA for the purpose of landing submarine cables at Alupeng to Muning Guam.
Roll call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, pass. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator Sin Augustine. Senator Sin Augustine, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, pass. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, pass. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, pass. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, pass, nay. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, pass, nay. Bill Number 36-36COR received 12 ayes, two nays, and one excused. Bill Number 36-36COR is duly passed by the body. Bill Number 117-36COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 117-36COR, introduced by Telo T. Taidegui, Joanne Brown, Therese M. Terlahi, Clinton E. Rogel, Christopher M. Duñez, V. Anthony Ada, Frank Blas Jr., Joe S. Sin Augustine, Sabina Flores Perez, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Jose Pito Terlahi. An act to amend Section 403K of Chapter 4, Title 1 Guam Code annotated, relative to changing the official name of the municipality of Aget to its name in the Tomorrow language, namely Hoget.
Roll call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator Sin Augustine. Senator Sin Augustine, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Bill Number 117-36COR received 14 ayes, zero nays, and one excused. Bill Number 117-36COR is duly passed by the body, Biba Hoget. Bill Number 118-36COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 118-36COR, introduced by Telo T. Taidegui, Joanne Brown, Therese M. Terlahi, Clinton E. Rogel, Christopher M. Duñez, V. Anthony Ada, Frank Blas Jr., Joe S. Sin Augustine, Sabina Flores Perez, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Jose Pito Terlahi. An act to amend Section 403J of Chapter 4, Title 1 Guam Code annotated, relative to changing the official name of the municipality of Humatic to its name in the Tomorrow language, namely Humatek.
Roll call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator Sin Augustine. Senator Sin Augustine, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Bill Number 118-36COR received 14 ayes, zero nays, and one excused. Bill Number 118-36COR is duly passed by the body, Biba Hoget. Dispenser, Biba Humatek. Bill Number 119-36COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 119-36COR, introduced by Telo T. Taidegui, Clinton E. Rogel, Joanne Brown, Therese M. Terlahi, Christopher M. Duñez, V. Anthony Ada, Frank Blas Jr., Joe S. Sin Augustine, Sabina Flores Perez, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Jose Pito Terlahi. An act to amend Section 403I of Chapter 4, Title 1 Guam Code annotated, relative to changing the official name of the municipality of Marisu to its name in the Tomorrow language, namely Malasu.
Roll call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator Sin Augustine. Senator Sin Augustine, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Bill Number 119-36COR received 14 ayes, zero nays, and one excused. Bill Number 119-36COR is duly passed by the body, Biba Malasu. Bill Number 125-36COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 125-36COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing, introduced by Telo T. Taidegui, Christopher M. Duñez, Joanne Brown, Frank Blas Jr., V. Anthony Ada, Therese M. Terlahi, Joe S. Sin Augustine, Clinton E. Rogel, Sabina Flores Perez, Tina Rose Munia Barnes. An act to amend Section 403L of Chapter 4, Title 1 Guam Code annotated, relative to changing the official name of the municipality of Sanarita to its name in the Tomorrow language, namely Santarita Sumai.
Roll call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator Sin Augustine. Senator Sin Augustine, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Bill Number 125-36COR received 14 ayes, zero nays, and one excused. Bill Number 125-36COR is duly passed by the body, Biba Santarita Sumai. Bill Number 126-36COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 126-36COR, introduced by Telo T. Taidegui, Clinton E. Rogel, V. Anthony Ada, Frank Blas Jr., Joanne Brown, Christopher M. Duñez, Therese M. Terlahi, Joe S. Sin Augustine, Sabina Flores Perez, Tina Rose Munia Barnes. An act to amend Section 403G of Chapter 4, Title 1 Guam Code annotated, relative to changing the official name of the municipality of Telafofo to its name in the Tomorrow language, namely Telafofo.
Roll call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator Sin Augustine. Senator Sin Augustine, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Torres, I.
Bill number 126-36COR, received fourteen ayes, zero nays, and one excused. Bill number 126-36COR is duly passed by the body. Viva Talafofo. Resolution number 121-36LS, clerks, please read the title.
Resolution number 121-36LS, as amended on the floor, Introduced by: Talina Cruz Nelson, Amanda L. Shelton, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Therese M. Terlahi, Joe S. San Augustine, Sabina Flores Perez, James C. Moylan, Frank Blas Jr., Relative to respectfully requesting that President Joseph R. Biden Jr. act within his administrative authority to remove the deadline to file a claim with the Foreign Claims Settlement Commission under the Guam World War II Loyalty Recognition Act and extend eligibility to the survivors of decedents who had passed away after the filing deadline of June 20, 2018.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, I. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, I. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, I. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, I. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, I. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, I. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, I. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, I. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, I. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, I. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, I. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, I. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, I. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, I.
Resolution number 121-36LS, received fourteen ayes, zero nays, and one excused. Bill number 121-36LS is duly passed, is duly adopted by the body. We're now in the voting file. On the nomination of Shannon J. Murphy to serve as a member of the Guam Ethics Commission, all in favor, please raise your hand. Shannon J. Murphy received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Joseph D. Francis to serve as a member, classroom teacher of the Guam Educational Telecommunications Corporation, KGTF PBS Board of Trustees, all in favor, please raise your hand. Joseph D. Francis received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Joseph M. Crisostomo Jr. to serve as a member, mixed martial arts representative of the Guam Unarmed Combatment Commission, all in favor, please raise your hand. Joseph M. Crisostomo Jr. received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Justin P. Beneventi to serve as a member, mixed martial arts representative of the Guam Unarmed Combat Commission, all in favor, please raise your hand. Justin P. Beneventi received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Christopher S. Murphy to serve as a member, real estate broker representative of the Guam Real Estate Commission, all in favor, please raise your hand. Christopher S. Murphy received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. We have exhausted the consideration of the daily file. Is there a motion to go back to second reading? Majority Leader Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Situs Massey, Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion that we go back to second reading to address the resolution and bills that we've added to the session agenda.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we are now in second reading. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I ask to...
Excuse me, Senator Shelton, forgive me. The clerks were like two minutes to upload all the documents to the website. So we'll take a two-minute recess.
Thank you.
Minatren Teisna Lesa Turnguahan is back in session. I want to thank the clerks for getting us back up to speed with the added on resolution and bills. So we are now on Resolution 54-36. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I ask that to place Resolution 54 in the third reading file and the opportunity to discuss.
Please proceed.
Sadhus Massey, Madam Speaker. Resolution 54-36 is relative to respectfully petitioning the United States Congress to enact legislation removing the filing deadline for the Guam World War II Loyalty Recognition Act Claims Program. And as our, as the public knows, we've been discussing war claims again in this, this session in Resolution 121 earlier this week. And Resolution number 54-36 is another avenue for us to, to try to continue seeking justice for our greatest generation. Hours after the attack on Pearl Harbor, our island was invaded by Japanese forces. And for three tumultuous years, they endured nearly unbearable suffering, a forced march, forced labor, beheadings, rape, hunger, things we would never wish upon anyone. But through their faith, perseverance, and commitment to each other, our Manamko, our greatest generation, survived the occupation and their prayers for liberation were finally answered on July 21st, 1944. For far too long, the pain and suffering of our greatest generation under Japanese occupation had gone unrecognized by the federal government. Through hard work and dedication of Guam's delegates and countless leaders, we finally won that federal recognition. Now, over 1,000 of our war survivors have lived to see checks they never thought would come. While no amount of money can atone for their pain of the past, it is recognition long overdue, recognition too many of our Manamko are still waiting for. My colleagues, we cannot let an arbitrary deadline that was set prevent us from continuing to honor our precious Manamko. More than 700 claimants who have missed the deadline through no fault of their own have already signed a petition, as mentioned earlier this week, requesting for the extension of the deadline. And we must continue to do what we can to ensure they get the recognition they deserve. This Resolution 54 reminds us that this painful chapter cannot be closed until every single war survivor receives the justice they deserve. We call upon the members of Congress to do what is necessary and do what is right for the people of Guam. Sadhus Massey, Madam Speaker, and I ask my colleagues for their support on behalf of Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, the main sponsor of this resolution.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. On Resolution number 54-36, is there any senator who would like to be recognized? If not, then Senator Shelton, you may close.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And I want to thank my colleagues for their support, majority of which are, I think we're all co-sponsors of this resolution. So I want to thank you all very much for your, your support. And I think I take the words, all of the sentiments that we shared together on Resolution 121, and I think we can apply them all here today, to know that we are standing with one voice to, to find any avenue we can to continue seeking justice for our war survivors, for those who suffered the atrocities of, of a war that they never asked for and they did not deserve. So I thank you very much, my colleagues and Madam Speaker, for this opportunity. And I ask that Resolution number 54-36 be placed in the voting file.
On the motion to place Resolution 54-36 on the third reading file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're still on second reading. We are now on Bill 75-36. Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I move to place Bill 7536 as substituted by Committee on General Government Operations and Housing to third reading file and to speak on it.
Did you say as substituted?
Yes, Madam Speaker, as substituted by the Committee on General Government Operations and Appropriation and Housing.
All right, thank you. On that motion, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill 7536 as substituted was introduced by myself along with Senator Tony Adah and Senator Chris Duaneus. It's an act to amend Sections 2C, 2D, 1, 3, 4, 5, and 6 of Public Law 35136, and Sections 1D, 2A, 2B, 4, 5, and 6 of Exhibit A of Public Law 35136, and to repeal Section 2D 2 of Public Law 35136 relative to amending provisions of the Recovery Income Support and Empowerment, also known as RISE Program of 2021, including increasing the amount of the benefit, removing certain requirements to apply, amending the authorized budget, and extending the deadline for the payout by six months. Madam Speaker, I thank my colleagues and for the attendance at the public hearing and for the committee for this germane substitute version. The version basically is what the original Bill 7536 was about, and that's paying out the RISE Act. I appreciate its legal involvement in this and the review of it after hearing the testimonies at the public hearing and discussing the changes that needed to be made to Bill 7536. Thus, we have submitted the substitute version, which is germane. And that public hearing that we had on July 28th, included in the committee reports are over 500 online petition signatures in favor of the changes and 18 written testimonies submitted as well. We also had a couple of hundred of comments on social media page. The one thing we didn't have was our government officials or representatives there to make any comments regarding the bill. But that was all right. We, we did have several comments and especially one from Mr. Adam Dalon, who gave an eloquent speech about the reasons and the purpose for this bill and moving it forward to include the changes that were submitted. So Bill 7536, it's, yes, it's a local relief for many families that will qualify and need the funding, but it's also an economic stimulus plan that would generate income for our island as we come through this pandemic together and rebuild our community. This germane substitute bill includes several things. One, looking at the amount, the current, of course, public law specifies the amount to be received by an individual who qualifies at $800. This, this bill then increases that to $1,000, and for families who qualify from $1,600 to $2,000. Why the increase in amount? Well, this public law 13536, the original RISE Act, was passed back in December of 2020. And we've gone back and forth with Adalup, the administration's figuring out why it wasn't paid since then. Till most, one of the most recent articles that we were provided is a frequently asked questions with the instructions from the Treasury Department on how we may use the American Rescue Plan funds. Back in July of 1990, and, I'm sorry, July of 19, July 19th of this year, it was clearly defined in the handout, in the frequently asked questions, the answer is yes. You can use the American Rescue Plans to pay households that were affected by this pandemic. It was clear. In addition to increasing the amounts to be paid out, we're also changing the date. The original law sunsets at on December 31st of 2021. Bill 75 increases that as for another six months to June 31st, 2022, to allow all the recipients that are eligible to participate. Another important change that you'll see in the substitute version is there is no cap. We should pay out all the qualified applicants. The governor has referred to the restrictions on the amount of money to be paid out by referring back to the original RISE Act, Public Law 135-36. So simply change it. Since the governor has yet to do so, this is why this no cap was included in the substitute version. Since, since the frequently asked questions, a report from the Department of Treasury has clearly identified these payments can be made for this purpose of the RISE Act, and the governor has agreed, then DRT has, can proceed and proceed with the instructions to pay this out. So that's included now, not that we need to identify any funds because they are identified already. The substitute version also includes a reporting, reports that the legislature would truly need to follow the transparency of how the American Rescue Plan money is being spent. It instructs DRT to submit monthly reports after the 60th day of the implementation of this. Monthly reports on the amount of money that was issued, paid out for this purpose, and the number of families that were helped. Another amendment with this is, of course, to follow the DRT application process, but also that there is not a time limit. It is not a first come, first served, but a six months' application for submittal so that all folks who are app, who may have, are qualified may apply. And we're also removing, another amendment will be removing the mayor's verification and employment verification as well, something the acting governor attempted to do to remove as well and allow DRT to verify at a later time. Madam Speaker, Public Law 35136 lapsed into law back in December of 2020. And in that original public law, they referred to the funding source. Where is this money going to come from? And the original public law clearly states that no local funds may be used for this program as long as federal funds that can be used for the purpose of this act are available, encumbered, obligated, or expend. Any funds transferred and concerned to this act can only be used for the purpose of this act, and payments under this act should be required only if payments can be funded under the federal coronavirus relief package or such other federal funds as are appropriate. And since the governor has come back recently and said yes, these payments can be made with the American Rescue Plan, so it's clear, the funding source and where it's going to come from. So no local funds and federal funds will be used. On August 5th, just a couple, what was it, yesterday, the Chief of Staff of the Governor sent the letter to the Director of Department of Revenue and Tax saying, use the federal funds, the all RISE Act as, as stated, since the governor has now cleared it. And that, the letter also included, it said, there's a forthcoming executive order, it's going to come out soon, I guess really soon too, to say as well, that we can use these funds. And they gave us the assurance that these fundings will be used. And they went back again to the reliance on the eligibility of Public Law 35136. They also want to ensure that all hands are on deck to make this happen, and they actually gave us a timeframe of, in September, which is about a month from now again. So the importance of this bill, and I thank my colleagues for allowing it to get to session agenda, is really to address all these issues that have been brought up since the original executive order of the all RISE Act. With these amendments, Madam Speaker, I believe this would say how the executive order that the governor will soon, let us know what it reads, needs to say. And with the points I brought forward and the substituted amended version that is germane to the original bill, I think we can provide those instructions clearly to the governor so she can write her executive order whichever comes first. I thank you, Madam Speaker, and I look forward to the comments of my colleagues.
Thank you, Senator. On Bill 75-36 as substituted, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized? Senator Adah, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I thank my colleague from Timuining, the author of the bill. Madam Speaker, this has been months now. And implementing the RISE, the all RISE, back to the RISE, we need to give the governor the tools that she needs to implement the law. This body has gone back and forth with the administration in seeking what we can do to implement this process that the, that the people of Guam can go and take advantage of these funds that have been given to us by the federal government. The amendments made into the bill, increasing it from 800 to 1,000 for single filers and 1,600 to 2,000 for joint filers, I believe is very reasonable. The increase from 30 million to 37.5 million is also reasonable, considering the amount of money that we received from the federal government. In overall, I believe they, they said we've received over $3 billion to this economy in different forms. Through the PPP, small businesses to, to help them, helping our educational facilities, helping our hospital, our healthcare clinics, and also helping our people. When you think about the amount of money that has come into our government and the amount of money that we're putting out to our people, it does not, it does not add up. We have not really set out to help as much people as we can. The governor still has over $300 million set aside for the hospital that she wanted to put there, but still not even sure if that can be used for the hospital. Maybe another amendment that to this bill needs to be made is not just expand it to retirees and governmental workers, but how about the middle class? Those in between the range of $60,000 to $120,000 income. I understand they're pushing it back to get what's needed to get the program running to September 1st. I understand that. I understand, you know, PUA will be ending by September 4th perhaps, and making available to the people after that additional funds. But are we truly helping the people who need the help? How many folks fall in that bracket of $60,000 to $120,000? The families who were both husband and wife were working because they made a certain range in income, they don't qualify for this assistance because they're now they're making $50,000 as a single filer and $100,000 as a joint filer. What are we doing to help those people? And I hope that the governor will expand her program if she does not want to implement or fund these programs, these bills that we have before us. And she says that the, the, the American Recovery Funds are hers and at her discretion, then I hope that she turns around and includes those folks. But she still has to be accountable for the money that's given to our island. Because one way or another, it's still taxpayer dollars. So I know we have another bill before us that we talked here on the floor, debated on the floor as well, and we need to pass these bills so we can give the governor the tools that she needs to say, okay, they gave me now the freedom to, to do what I need to ensure we can pay these out. Can't come back to this body, can't throw the ball back to the body again and says, well, I can't do this because whatever the reason may be next time. But I ask my colleagues, please, let's pass these bills, let's get them to the governor to sign so that she can turn around and implement them and give the people the money where they're going to need it. Because when, when you look at it, September 4th of the deadline with PUA ending, everything else is starting. School begins, the holiday seasons begin. So people are going to need the money. And I hope that the ball will stop being passed from Adalup to Agania, Hagatna, Hagatna back to Adalup. Let's take care of this situation and let's help our people. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Duaneus, you are recognized.
Sadhus Massey, Madam Speaker, and I certainly do rise in full support of Bill 7536. You know, Madam Speaker, first of all, I want to thank my good colleague from Timuining in inviting me many months ago to be a co-sponsor to this, this bill. What was kind of interesting in some of the back and forth, even when we introduced the bill, was I kind of feel bad for my colleague that, you know, Jim didn't author the RISE Act. It's kind of interesting because on page two, the good senator acknowledges this was a bill that was introduced and enacted in the 35th Guam Legislature by none other than the good senator, Rajim Bisco Lee. Nobody's ever claimed credit for doing that. As a matter of fact, Madam Speaker, yourself and the good senator were involved in the original increases of amounts in the 35th Guam Legislature. This is very consistent with what happened in the 35th. And I want to thank all the members here on the floor that were a member of the 35th and saw the wisdom of this bill that ended up lapsing into law. Madam Speaker, the author has already indicated all of the amendments that have been put into this bill to make it stronger, so I'm not going there. But I will say that, other than the original intent of this bill, which was to give some additional assistance to our people, the reason why this bill is now timely on the floor is because we've had this back and forth with the administration. And while the administration has decided by executive order to take the intent of the original RISE Act and basically render the law useless because of the executive order having the stronger force and effect, there was a lot of back and forth as to what the law disallowed. And so it only makes sense for this august body, for this 36 Guam Legislature, to make sure that we speak clearly that if the executive order was not amended to include all the things that supposedly the former public law restricted, then we needed to things that supposedly the former public law restricted, then we needed to act again. So this bill is a perfect vehicle so that the people of Guam are clear. Are clear that if there's ever going to be a reference to a public law and the fact that there needs to be no cap because this program's been extended. I'm sure the good senator Lee and yourself and other colleagues on this floor ensured that that 30 million was going to fall within the approximate amount of what the original Rise Act called for. But when the executive order was put into place, obviously, when you're adding thousands of additional individuals who qualify, there's going to be a need for additional money. When I read the executive order yesterday, Madam Speaker, or the intent of amending the executive order that the chief of staff had written to the director of Revenue and Taxation, really all it discussed was taking out the onerous issues of the application process. It said nothing about eliminating the cap. And it basically said nothing about implementation. In fact, some of the things that your bill does, Madam Speaker. So in closing, we know that if the governor just wants to go in and amend the executive order completely with everything that we contain in the legislation to clarify the back and forth between the front office, that can be done. But in the meantime, I actually think passing this measure, passing both measures, however we do it, is speaking loudly and clearly that we're attempting to be on the same page. And that we're actually complementing each other in this effort and that we don't have any ambiguity or confusion anymore between how to once and for all execute this program. From its intent, from the introduction of the original author to the last check being paid to the qualified individual. Sisus Mossi, Madam Speaker, and I hope that this body will pass Bill 7536.
Sisus Mossi. Sisus Mossi. On Bill number 75, is there any other senator who would like to be recognized? Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Just a point of inquiry for the sponsor of the bill, Madam Speaker. I'd just like to know what the overall cost will be now that we are increasing the amounts we anticipated earlier, 30 million, and now the amounts are changing. So what is the amount that we are looking at now? It does not say in the fiscal note the amount.
Would the sponsor yield to the question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, yes. Now, the amounts, since the governor has increased the eligibility from those in the private enterprise or private companies to now include via her executive order, 2021-11, to include government Guam employees, to include retirees of the government, and to include federal employees. I'm sure the governor has discussed this with BBMR before even making that attempt, since she even discussed this further with the attorney general, feeling that the original public law was biased by not including others. But yet she kept that amount of $30 million. And the governor has further come out and stated, even if we pass this bill, this one or the next one, it will still be $30 million and promised to veto it. But, you know, it has been known that the governor has changed her mind, so hope for the best. The difficulty in determining the exact amount won't actually be known until all those actually apply and who qualify. BBMR unfortunately did not give a fiscal note on this to determine it. And on the original bill, 7536 as introduced, basically said there was not enough funding in the general fund to pay for it because our general fund is already short and we couldn't pay for it. They estimated with the increased amount on the original 75-36, it would be 37,500. But now since the governor has increased the amount of eligible people, a new amount hasn't been estimated by BBMR. But we have $600 million or 600 million reasons that we can fund this to the end. So I think with that, by removing the cap and having a six-month possibility of allowing those who are eligible to complete their application, therefore, I'm sure that the American Rescue Plan has enough available in order to suffice. I think we would also have difficulty in figuring out the actual amount necessary when we don't even know the governor's plans of what to do with the American Rescue Plan, on how she asked to spend it. We've come together as a body and honestly gave her our written recommendations on how to spend or our suggestions on how to most appropriate this money. And we were hoping to hear the governor's reply, but there is silence on that. Actually, more than silence, it's basically just butt out and we're not going to tell you. So with that kind of attitude coming from Atalup, I say, remove the cap. If you're not going to help us determine how we're going to spend this money, then I'm going to say, allow it to go to the people. You pay what's deserving of the people from the American Rescue Plan, and until the last person who is eligible finishes that within six months' application process, then we're So I hope to have an answer from BBMR, but I doubt it. I hope to have a favorable opinion on this bill as a substitute committee by the governor, but that's to be seen. I hope that answered the question, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Senator Nelson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. No, it does not answer the question. I specifically asked for the amount. So that's all I wanted to know is to understand if you're sponsoring a bill, that you'd know the cost of it as well. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Is there any other senator who'd like to be recognized on Bill 75-36? If not, then the sponsor may close. Oh, sorry, Senator Tai Tegui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this is just a point of information and maybe just a simple correction made by Legal, but it's on page three, section five. Even though it is crossed out, it's important that we still have the numbers to correct. Right now, the numbers are saying 370,000,5000000. I just hope they can make a correction to this particular number here.
Note it for Legal. Is there any other senator who'd like to be recognized on the bill? If not, then the sponsor may close. Senator Moylan.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, colleagues. Madam Speaker, I believe I join many others with a surprising emotional announcement by the Leon-Gerl administration that a timeline has actually been provided on the application process for this Rise Act or the All Rise Act as created by the executive order. But unfortunately, that is all that we've heard, a brief timeline. So I, you know, I truly understand that this legislation may not be needed for local stimulus package, as the governor has the authority to establish a program via executive order if federal funds are indeed going to be used. And in that executive order, she probably won't tell us the total amount needed to make it happen either. But I do understand that the governor has taken everybody on a roller coaster ride on this Rise Act over the past few weeks and months. And some days, it's a local law, and some days, it's an executive branch program. So the question now is, why should we pass Bill 7536? Well, the bill is a model. The version in front of us is a accumulation of voices of the community. It's about various concerns that have been shared on social media, at family events, at restaurants, and basically almost everywhere. People have spoken and made recommendations on a program which directly impacts them. So this Bill 7536 poses to increase the payout of the Rise Act from 800 to 1,000, which means more money and more pockets. It removes some of the requirements for the application process, including the mayor's unemployment verification, neither of which seem necessary for the proceeds to be released for this program. The measure also extends the application process for another six months. And most importantly, it will assure that no qualified resident who applies within a reasonable timeline is denied the benefit because Bill 75 removes the 30 million cap. It would not be unjust if only the strong survive, meaning only those able to expeditiously apply would benefit, and the rest will be left behind because the governor refuses to increase the cap. The Rise Act should not be treated as a snapshot of a movie like Hunger Games. You know, I understand that the governor may veto this bill to pass, but this legislative body should take this measure and input of the community and send her a document for consideration. By passing Bill 7536, we are merely advising the community that we held a public hearing, that we heard the cries of the community, and that before she signs a new executive order on her All Rise Act, that she considers these recommendations. Passing Bill 7536 sends a strong statement to Atalup and reminds the community that this legislative body heard their concerns and acted. Anything less will be unacceptable. So I thank you, Madam Speaker, and I thank my colleagues.
Thank you very much, Senator Moylan. There a motion to place in the voting file?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. A move to place Bill 7536 as substituted by committee to be placed in voting file.
On the motion to place in the voting file, are there any objections? No objections, motion passes. Thank you, Senator Moylan. Will now move to Bill number 164-36 to recognize the author, Speaker Therese Terlahey.
Sisus Mossi, Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill number 164-36, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing, be placed on the third reading file, and I'd like to discuss it.
Please proceed.
First, I want to acknowledge that we recognize, I recognize, that the executive order established a new program, an All Rise program, distinguishable from the Rise program that we passed in the last term. And that by executive order, the governor is able to address and remedy any of the impediments in the All Rise program. That it could be paid at any time, it could be paid any amount, and it could require minimal documentation or any type of documentation. But we're doing this bill anyways because frankly, I could not stand anymore the confusion that was in the community and that people were being made to line up at the mayor's offices in particular for hours, especially in the large villages. And that was the reality. And it went on for quite a long period. And it kept helping that it would be stopped and, you know, some more semblance of, I just feel like making people line up when we know these are the most vulnerable people. These are the people in need who we are trying to help. I did not think it is appropriate that we're going to let them line up at these mayor's offices like that. The mayors were very clear that this was overwhelming their offices, let alone putting their staff and the people who were there lining up at risk as well, and taking them away from other very important work that needs to be done. We heard from these people that they were afraid to get out of the line. They wanted to stay in line despite it being hours long because they were worried that with the $30 million cap and the doubling of the number of people who now can apply, that they would run out of money. They were told that the government or this program would run out of money, and if they did not get there first, it was first come, first served, and then you're out of luck. It was really, I don't know, I felt like a desperate situation, like already they're in need and we were making them desperate to line up, desperate to get there first, and desperate almost to clamor over each other. I mean, I hope we never do that again. I hope, I hope we do everything that we can to prevent that type of feeling after all that the people have gone through. We are in a situation right now where families are still in need. As one of my colleagues mentioned, this is the time where families are trying to get back to school. We're trying to get these families back to work before the Pua runs out. We've got very little time left. We're hearing about families who spend up to $400 per child to buy uniforms, school supplies, what they need for public schools. That's because they were just told this week that they don't need to buy, they might not need to buy school supplies and they might not need to buy school uniforms. But in doing this type of thing, I mean, all these families, they're juggling between paying rent. They're still doing this. They've been doing this throughout the year that we've been suffering COVID shutdowns and different disruptions, school disruptions especially. They've been juggling rent, supplies, car payments, food, critical needs. This is the reality, and so that is what I feel like why we are here and why we have to act despite, you know, we can debate this in the legal realm, you know, for days and days, but obviously, it was not ending the confusion, it was not ending the desperate feeling people were having, and it was not ending the lines, it was not ending just that feeling that they might lose out. So I'm just hoping that addressing this issue by this and any other means will allow the people to move on, it will allow all of the government to move on and address the next thing in line that we have to deal with, and the next thing in line that we have to deal with, to address the jobs, the retraining, the boot camps, the apprenticeships, how we're going to get people in there so that they can be paid to learn, paid to retrain, paid to get a different job if their jobs are no longer available. How are we going to move on to school openings so that we can assist these teachers who are being made to flux, I mean, in a great, great way over the past year and a half, and then again in the upcoming school year, and the students? So these parents can stop worrying about whether they're going to get their rise and they can count on their they can count on they're going to get their RISE money, and they can start concentrating on the other things that they need to concentrate on. We have a resurgence of variants of COVID that really should be attracting all of our attention, and that's why I just hope that with every issue that we can address and knock out as fast as possible, especially while we spend these ARP funds, that we just be deliberate, that we do it. If we have to do it one at a time, we do it one at a time. If we can do it more than one at a time, then please, let's do that. And really, it's for all of the community's benefit so that they can count on us. So this bill was introduced pretty much to make some amendments to the original RISE Act in case the governor refers to those in her All RISE program as she did in her original executive order, and so that we remove from that original RISE Act anything that might cause any type of delay. That's pretty much the bottom line of what we're doing here. So I want to thank the acting, the acting governor, who allowed the Department of Revenue and Taxation to conduct an administrative review that would no longer require residents to obtain a mayor's verification form, and the governor for issuing, or her chief of staff for issuing a memo yesterday that the, that they would further streamline the process. So I look forward to those further streamlining, and I trust that if we move, if we remove impediments for the Director of Revenue and Taxation, she will, she will find a way for the most efficient processing of this, this RISE or this type of payment. So we removed requirements and left what we believed in discussions with the director, what was necessary according to her, and that was a completed Form 8821. This is an authorization. It authorizes the Department of Revenue and Taxation to inspect your Guam Form 1040, your tax return. And I know it's kind of boggling that we file them at Rev and Tax, but they are not allowed to look at them. I don't know. But that's a legal requirement according to the director, so we're going to require people to authorize her to look at those 1040 forms. We're going to require the forms for those who did not file 1040 forms, those who, who can file an SSA 1099 or Form RRB 1099 for individuals who are SSB recipients, not required to file tax returns. We're going to require that they give the Director of Revenue and Taxation their Social Security numbers, and we're going to require an application. I'm hoping she can simplify that to the consent form, that they can serve the same purpose. But whatever she needs, I'm hoping she will make it as minimal as possible. And this bill will allow her to require any other additional documentations that she needs, because I trust her to determine that. And, but it does not require her to do that by AAA or anything like that. It just says she's going to determine it, and it's going to happen. So I'm hoping that this will give the director the flexibility to administer this program with minimal impediments and as swiftly as possible. That's the goal. The bill also extends the expiration date for the delivery of payments, and I did this not because I want these not to be paid, I want them to be paid tomorrow. I wanted them to be paid when we pass the bill. We, they especially should have been paid when we received the ARP money. It's been sitting there for months. However, I've extended the deadline for application just because it is the reality that we have seen with many of these programs. We just finished discussing this with the War Claims Program, that some people need assistance to hear about doing this, assistance in actually doing this, and they need a little bit more time. And so I just didn't want anyone to miss out for any reason. It could be that they're just struggling with so many things, they never had a chance to get to it. And it's really just to remove that desperate feeling as well, or that desperate, you know, that our community has to be desperate. Finally, the bill lifts the $30 million cap on the RISE program to ensure that every eligible applicant will get paid. And without this amendment, it's unclear if the 30 million would be enough funding to accommodate the governor's expansion of the eligibility requirements from the RISE Act to the All RISE program through executive order. The cap in the original bill only accounted for certain number of applicants, as defined in the original law, and not for the individuals who are now eligible. So the bill would remove that cap. So Bill 164 is, at this point, a housekeeping bill that will hopefully remove the impediments to the payment of the RISE and the All RISE programs, allow the director some flexibility so she can as efficiently as possible implement these programs. To get these relief payments, as has always been our priority, out to the people in most need as fast as possible. And there should be no more excuses for delay in these payments, and I hope that this measure can be passed by my colleagues and that the governor will consider this favorably. You know, in the alternative, if she can implement the program without it, then by all means, please, that is really the goal. So I want to thank my colleagues, and I want to thank the chairman of the Committee on Appropriations for hearing this bill swiftly and for getting it onto the floor for us to act on today. Sajous Masi.
Sajous Masi, Speaker Terlachy. We are on Bill 164-36. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the bill? Senator Duvainius, you are recognized.
Sajous Masi, Madam Speaker. I certainly rise in support of Bill 164-36, and this will probably be my shortest comments on the floor. You know, as a child, one of the instructions that my parents always repeated to me was, boy, two heads are better than one. So I say, two bills are better than one. But Madam Speaker, I do want to bring up once again a concern that was brought by one of my colleagues on 7536. So I have a question for the author of 16436 because I want to vote for both bills. Is there an anticipated amount that the author of Bill 16436, or any fiscal note deriving that? And I proffer that question to the chair for the mover of the bill.
Thank you, Senator Duvainius. Speaker Terlachy, do you yield to the question?
Sure, I will yield to that question. My bill does not change the amounts at all, Madam Speaker. All it does is remove a cap on the total. And so the amounts that are going to be paid are going to be paid according to executive order or according to the bill as, or the law as it was. It really, at this point, is dependent on the governor. And according to my bill, it would be the governor, I don't know, because that's information the governor put in, not us. She's the one who increased the eligibility pool. She's never given us a number of people that that applies to. She's never given us any of that information, and so, no, we do not know that information, and neither has her team provided that information to us, despite the public hearings and the fiscal note requirements. So all we know is that we really don't, that, you know, the amount. I mean, for me, all I know is the amount that should be paid to everybody according to, if Bill 164 passes and 75 does not, the amount would be, what was it, $800, right? That's what we know, per person. Sajous Masi.
Sajous Masi, Madam Speaker, and I ask that because it wasn't, it was an anticipated amount in Bill 7536. It was $37,500 from the 30 in the original RISE Act. So essentially, the distinct difference between the two bills is the fact that 75 raises, yes, the individual from 800 to 1,000, and the 1,600 to 2,000. That's correct, and that's why the number of 37,500,000 was estimated. But by removing or lining through that, Madam Speaker, we did the same thing. We basically eliminated any cap. So both bills essentially do the same thing. Both bills do not have a fiscal note, which would denote what is going to be the amount. So I look forward to voting for both bills. Sajous Masi, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Duvainius. Anyone else wishing to speak on Bill 164? Senator Tiedegui, you are recognized.
Sajous Masi, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon to my colleagues. Madam Speaker, I stand in support of Bill 164-36, and though I didn't speak on 75, I also stand in support. I plan, like my other colleagues, most of us, who are going to vote for both bills. But we need to be realistic here because this is not something that even if it's passed by this body, and even though she lapses, lapses this bill into law, not sign it like she did the first original RISE Act, as well as another bill that was passed by this legislature that asked her to use federal funding, which she also lapsed into law, there is clearly a separation of power issue here. So I asked myself, well, if this, if this bill is basically inorganic, or even the other bills that passed were inorganic, why am I going to stand in support of something that I know? And let's be real here, it is inorganic. But Madam Speaker, as I thought about this, I thought about this, I said, well, then let's force her hands because she's not doing anything right now. That money was intended to help our people, and we've been waiting and waiting. The original bill was passed in December of last year, Madam Speaker, last year, and she's still not doing it. So we need to act. We need to get up in front of here and say, Governor, it's time. It's time you implement this. And one thing what Bill 164 does is it removes all those hindrances that are causing delays. The author of the bill explained about those who are standing in line, long lines, manamku, out in the rain. So let's do something in this body. Let's stand up and say, Governor, we are asking you as a body to move on this, move forward. You have the ultimate authority in spending this federal funding. You have the ultimate authority, and we're showing you our support to you so that you would push on this legislation. Money that was needed for our people, money that's intended for our people, money where there's no question or doubt that you need to go to the federal government to ask, can I use this money to give to people who suffered during COVID, who lost their jobs, lost income? That's what this money was meant for. Madam Speaker, I also appreciate that the senator that introduced this legislation also changed the date to 2023. We've been hearing in the news that this funding could be longer than, than one year to utilize the funding, or it could be two years, maybe even three. But as long as it takes to help these individuals, it's important. So I'm happy to see that that was also included in this legislation. You know, I've had a couple constituents call me because they were so confused about what is the RISE program, what is the All RISE, or which is it, because they're very confused. And even if you read the, the executive order, the governor talks about, you know, implementing a program to add additional individuals that did not, were not recognized in the All RISE, but utilizing the same process as the All RISE, and I mean, as the RISE, even I'm confused because if you read the legislation, you're not quite sure. Is this the All RISE program that implements a cap, or is this the All RISE, All RISE Act? I mean, it's so confusing at this point. But what's not confusing, Madam Speaker, is her ability, her ability to use this funding to help our community, those most in need. That's not confusing at all. And she can do that on her own, without us, without this body. Simplify it, Madam Speaker. Pass this bill, both bills if you want, because it is different. One increases it and one doesn't. I mean, we're all going to stand here and figure out what's going to happen. If both bills pass this legislation, which one is she going to allow to lapse into law? That's what we're all sitting here wondering about. But what we really need to do is push her to do it now. Look at the SinoMI. Look what they've been doing in implementing this funding that was given to them for their Already, the people in the SinoMI have received $500 from their funding, their federal funds, and we haven't done anything yet. Our brothers and sisters in the SinoMI, they planned ahead. And technically, so did this body in December, or last year in the 35th Guam Legislature. We planned ahead too, even before the money landed on Guam. We planned ahead, and it was called the RISE Act. We had it ready for her. But the opportunity right now in this legislation takes away all the hindrance in time to allow it to go through a lot faster, and I think that's very, very important about this legislation. And I too thank the lieutenant governor, the acting governor at the time, to lift that requirement as well. So Madam Speaker, I thank my colleagues for everyone supporting both measures, but I also stand here to plead to the governor to move this forward now because tonight a family might not have what it takes to survive, to put food on their table, to pay their power bill, to pay their rent, and we need to assist them now, today. We need to assist them months ago. So please, Madam Governor, let's do what this body had planned way in advance, to put money in the pockets of our community, the money that was meant to be used for. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Tiedegui. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on Bill 164-36? Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You know, I certainly appreciate the comments that have been made on the floor by my colleagues, not just here today in session, and I'm speaking now. I certainly also will find my comments concurrent to the previous bill that was on the floor, Bill 75, including the public hearings that we've attended with regards to this issue. And as I've been thinking about this process, I mean, you know, I'm reflecting back on where we were a year ago, you know, when we started where we were a year ago, you know, when we started to experience the impact of this virus and how it affected our community, you know, when most of us were tied down to our homes and basically only ventured out to take care of the real necessities of life, to go grocery shopping, perhaps stand in the extended long lines of the post office to make sure you got your bills that you could hopefully pay. And really deal with the realities that, you know, something like this virus could really bring us as a community to a standstill and recognize it just didn't affect us in our little island of Guam, but, you know, it was a worldwide pandemic. Then I started thinking, you know, it's ironic. You think during times of challenge, when we as leaders in this community should be coming together, should be dialoguing openly and discussing how we can help facilitate getting the help that we need to our community. What we see and hear is the total absolute opposite of that. What we hear is almost no engagement publicly, very little effort collectively between the legislature, from the House of the People, with the administration. And you know, I'm sure for our people observing all this, it must be kind of ironic to them that, again, at a time of great need, when they're expecting their leaders to work collectively in their interests, work cooperatively in their interests, they get the total opposite. Instead, we're arguing back and forth. And even those of us who are elected officials are left in the dark about what actions the administration is going to take to finally release these funds into the community to help our people. Granted, the federal government has, oh my goodness, who would have ever dreamed that the federal government would provide as much money as they have to Guam as a result of this pandemic? But yet again, because we do have this money, we don't know how it's going to be spent. Not just the legislature. I mean, goodness, we couldn't think of ourselves as being that important. But most important is our people in this community. The people of Guam still don't know how this money is going to be spent. Why is that? Why is that? You know, it's like we're going to Adalup and we're going, we're knocking on the castle doors almost, and we're going to take our petitions of these bills. We're going to hold them up in our hands and take them to Adalup and say, oh, dear Governor, can you please consider paying the RISE Act to our dear people of Guam? Whichever version, please do something? I don't know who's planning the PR or messaging at Adalup or strategizing. But I have to tell you, the bottom line is, the people still don't know. Why is that? I ask that question. This money doesn't belong, as we've reiterated time and time again, to the administration. I mean, goodness, what money has been paid, we have to question. We're still questioning as a result of the recent public auditor's report on these expenditures for the initial hotel that was procured by the government or improperly or illegally procured. That we still don't know. One of our colleagues there, Senator Frank Blaz, has continuously raised that issue since the audit report came out. I mean, we're hearing through the media, you know, hotel rooms that are not even being used right now are being paid. But paying the people directly from the local government of Guam through federal money that is given to us at the courtesy of the federal taxpayer, we don't know. What people have received in payment is directly from the U.S. Treasury. But our local government, goodness, this is a one-time payment. We're not even talking about something people are going to receive consistently over a period of months. We're talking about a single payment, a single payment. And yet people have to go through all these hurdles and they're not sure, as our good colleague Senator Tello mentioned, they don't even know what they got to do at this point. Why is it? We only have four months into this year left, four months from a year ago, and I was not a member of the previous legislature, four months left, which at least according to December of last year, this legislation became law, which the governor didn't sign, but now the governor, I guess, is embracing because now it's not the RISE Act, it's the All RISE Act. Do people need to go get verification at their mayor's? Do they not need to go get verification at the mayor's office? Which is it? What is it? I'm just as confused. Why is this the response during challenging times? Why is this the response we're getting from our leadership at Adalup? What is so complicated about this process? You would think that because this time for us is unprecedented, including the amount of federal money that Guam's receiving directly to respond to this pandemic, why isn't there open engagement? More the reason, so there's not speculation and questions as to really how is this money being spent? Why is it so difficult to be able to address getting this money to the people that need it the most? Why is that? I'm sure our people must be asking that question because here we talk about it and get on the radio and talk about it and write articles in the print media about it, and yet still to this day, the payments have not been made. Now, if the administration's going to move forward with paying it, why have we had to wait so long? You know, normally Guam, you know, kind of takes pride in the fact that we're in the lead in the region, even with our good brothers and sisters in the CNMI. We always like to think, oh, you know, we're always ahead of CNMI. Well, goodness, in this case, we have to wonder, as Senator Tello just commented on just a few minutes ago. I mean, at least they figured out how to get money directly to their people, how to get money directly into the economy. I mean, if we were to do something similar and provide funding for these, you know, cards as they did there, I guess you'd call it a credit card or something to that effect, so that members of our community could go out to their respective businesses and contribute directly, contribute directly to this economy and to those businesses out there that have been challenged over this past year. At least the money is getting out there directly to our peoples, directly out into the business community where it's needed, to help keep people hired or hire more people back. But we haven't done that either. And only yesterday, oh my goodness, yesterday, the administration sends a letter out to Rev and Tax about what their process is finally going to be? Is it only because this issue is being raised? Is it only because these two bills are on the agenda? What a disappointment. What a disappointment. We take the power of the people and return, we leave them waiting in the dark. There's no good explanation that can ever justify why what is happening is happening. You know, there's no press release, speech that could be put together to justify what has taken so long. You know, my colleagues, when this meeting happened a couple months ago, I have to give credit to our speaker in being able to get everyone together and at least come to a general idea of agreement or consensus on what we would recommend. Because the governor asked publicly, hey, what's your plan? What would you propose this money to be used for? And certainly, there are all different perspectives here, but, you know, we came to a general consensus, all 15 of us, what a rare moment, but we did. And the legislature presented that to the administration, and a couple months later, we still don't know what the administration's plan is. The people of Guam still don't know what the administration's plan is. Why is that the decision? Why is that the decision that has been made to take all this federal money that was intended to help our people during what are the most challenging of times? And yes, we're seeing some increases in positive cases recently that certainly we're concerned about. We certainly don't want to go back to where we were last year or earlier this year. Maybe for most of us, the inconvenience we have is we're still having to wear these masks, constantly sanitize our hands, and go through the protocol. Maybe that gives us a remnant of what we went through. And yet, while we're still at the tail end of what we hope is the tail end of this process, we don't, we're no more enlightened. We're no more enlightened with what is going to be done with this money or how it's going to be spent. And yet, we're going to be expected to come in here shortly and deal with the budget for the upcoming fiscal year, and we still don't have an idea of how this money is going to be spent or addressed or facilitated in the government to assist our people. But we're expected to come in here and vote on a budget. This is not transparency. And I've often heard the governor say, oh, we're transparent. We are transparent. Well, talking about it's one thing. Doing it, carrying it out in the, with regards to your official duties, that's totally another. Like I said earlier, if we cannot come together during a time of crisis, when can we ever come together? When can we ever come together? I'm going to vote for these two bills, even though I think we all know we're just going through the motions because officially, we really have no say in how this money is being You know, it makes you wonder why when our forefathers, and unfortunately, it was our forefathers that, you know, set up our system of democracy, why we have the three branches of government. I'm sure it was intended to make sure not any one of us was superior to the other, that we would hopefully have that balance, that check and balance in the government system to make sure none of us were abusive of the power that's been granted to us by the people, temporarily granted to us by the people. And yet here we see that when the administration has control of these funds, what they do with it. They certainly don't lift the curtains to let the rest of the people of Guam know how they intend to spend it. Why is that? Again, I have to ask that question because that really boggles my mind. While we may not all agree on the process of how the money is going to be spent, by all means, let's at least put it out there so we know, so that we can plan, so that we can prepare. Because what happens if this virus and the challenges with it continue? What if there is a bigger resurgence? Then what? The other reality is our economy, this artificial economy that we're living in right now. And boy, they're very quick, sending out the press releases about, oh, we paid off the deficit. It's all good. We just didn't talk about the 300 million before that that was addressed because of course, we don't give credit to anybody else that came before us. It's only about us and what we can do. And that's what I'm feeling like, Madam Speaker. It's all about us. So we'll see, colleagues. I mean, we'll pass this knowing that, you know, I guess I'd just be curious to see whether she signs it or not, maybe. But we're at the castle doors knocking. I think our people is, you know, they deserve and expect better than this. What does it tell you? I think it's very, very disturbing what it tells me. Maybe they have some grand plan that we're not aware of, and maybe we'll get enlightened, and we're just going to be so overwhelmed by the greatness of it that it'll just make us forget all these many months since these fans have been transferred, what they're going to do with it. Maybe we're going to be so razzled and dazzled by it. But it's disappointing because there's no responsible explanation as to why we, the people of Guam, have not been informed about what the intended expenditures are going to be, and why are we waiting? What is the big grand delay in delaying that information? No matter what project is proposed, I mean, we talked about the fact that some of this money was being looked at to address systemic issues in our government, or whether or not the governor can still take the 300 million and build her hospital. I think we can probably come to consensus, the most important use for it right now is to help our people get out of this challenging time, to make sure that their basic needs can be addressed, to make sure that they can pay for their obligations. And, you know, as my colleague Senator Blaz here has often said, just the basic needs of getting food. Maybe those of us that haven't had to stand in the food line don't know what it feels like because, you know, we're all good. You know, Madam Speaker, there are times when politics really should not be the back and forth. This is, to me, should never have been one of those issues for the back and forth. This was one of the issues we should have come to the table with consensus. As long as it's open to the public, I'll be there. I'll be there for that dialogue. But this continued isolation that the administration has taken to hold close to themselves how they intend to spend this money, even as we come up, and certainly, I'm going to raise that issue when we come back here to talk about the budget. Because I don't know how I can make a decision on that, not knowing how all this federal money is going to be spent and where it's going to be spent, and what parts of our government are going to receive it. But we'll continue to do what I guess we need to do, speak out. Because right now, that's all, I feel like we're just petitioning. Please, Governor, consider our petition on behalf of our dear people of Guam. I, like I said, I don't know who's doing their strategizing up there on the Hill, but I don't know how they think this is somehow going to look good. Because it certainly doesn't look good now. And I give my colleagues credit for introducing their bills. I mean, I aday. How unfortunate. I guess we'll wait and see what they're going to do with these bills. Like I said, I'm very curious to see what the governor does with these bills. But how unfortunate and how sad that it's taken this long to even address how we're going to help the people. Because this bill, to my understanding, was intended to help those that needed it the most, especially those that were unemployed or lost hours as a result of businesses having to shut down as a result of this pandemic. And here we are, eight months later, and the government of Guam through the administration has not done very much to directly assist them. The federal government has tripped over to get out here to facilitate these payments, but our own government itself has not done very much to assist, directly assist our community. And be it we do it and raise the cap from 800 to 1,000, be it we do it, you know, 40,000, 80,000, whatever the amounts are we put out there, whether it's to retirees and federal and Guam employees, I mean, we know we're going through the motions here. We're simply going through the motions because the administration will remind us that it's their authority. It's their authority, their power to decide how this money is going to be spent. Oh my mind, I wonder why we had the three branches of government? Because look at the danger when you have someone in the executive that's taking all this money and not disclosing it. When you think the right thing to do is the total opposite, be transparent, be open, be direct with the people on how this money is going to be spent on their behalf, I think they have a right to know. Us, we're inconsequential to the process, legislature, oh my goodness, those important senators, gosh, we're so important. Make our titles bigger on our signs. We're just a conduit to that process. So colleagues, I certainly will vote for both of these bills, and let's see what they do. But this is not a winning strategy, what's going on right now, and not relating to the people what's being done with money that was never intended for the administration, was intended for our community and for our people. And right now, there's, you know, they're not acing this issue, and they certainly could be doing more to do so. But we shall wait and see. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Sajid Smasi, Senator Brown. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on Bill 164-36? Senator Blaz, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for giving me that opportunity to speak on Bill 164. I want to also say that I'm also going to support Bill 75, as well as 165. I'm just going to get this out of the way because I'm sure that there are other people that are watching this telecast. And I'm sure that the response will probably be those 15 people down there don't really know what needs to happen. know what needs to happen to be able to spend this money. They have no grasp of it. My answer to that? Absolutely right. Because you haven't shared it with us. Because what you plan to do, or what you need to plan to do, or what you have to do, you haven't shared with us. So what I see in both Bills 75 and Bill 164 is then our attempt to be able to unravel some of the things that need to get done that you haven't shared with us as to what needs to get done, so that you can help to get the money out to the people. You know, and I share the same frustration as every speaker before me. As well as the concerns from some of us, this is necessary. Truly, what is, if, and if we were working in a transparent government, if we were doing things in unison, as was we had promised, as was we were told that it was going to happen a few months ago, would this be necessary? As a body, as was mentioned earlier, we opened our arms and said, we are willing to work with you. Here is a listing of some ideas, recognizing that obviously, we have no control as to who, how this money's going to be spent, but here's some of our ideas that we can work with you on. Share with us your ideas so that we can remove any impediments that exist in law, so that we can help our people. And we're now to this. I've got a great idea for both Bill 75 and Bill 164 of how we can get things moving on this thing, on these bills, of how we can get this money out to the people. Why don't we just put a provision in there that those individuals that are responsible for doing this, don't get paid until it gets done? See what it's going to be like to be have to live, go through another day not knowing how you're going to be able to pay for the bills, how you're going to be able to put food on your table, how you're going to be able to gas your car, how you're going to be able to pay for your house or your apartment? Just that worry itself. But no, you know what's happening right now? There are people that are watching this telecast right now, and unfortunately, people that are in this room right now that are saying, you know what, Senator Blas, shut up so that we can finish this thing off, so that we can go home, because we have to go get ready for that dinner party that we have to go to tonight, or we have to go, we have to go get the groceries, or those produce that is necessary so that we can go to, prepare for that party tomorrow. That's what is happening with those people, with the leadership, that is necessary to be able to move this along. So that our people can get that money deserved, that they need from the All Rise Act. We can plan for what's going to happen over the next few days. There are still thousands of people out there, there are thousands of families out there that are just praying that they can get by another day. What a novel idea. Why don't we just not pay? If you're supposed to do something and you don't do it, you're not going to get paid until you get it done. You want to know why there's no urgency in it? Again, like I said, and I've said it before, it's because we're getting paid. And right now, there are thousands of people who aren't being paid that are waiting for the leaders that are being paid to move. So for the sake of those leaders, those individuals that have plans for tonight, and they'll deal with this tomorrow, I'll add by saying I support both bills. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Anyone else on Bill 164-36? Now that I invite the sponsor to close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I want to thank my colleagues for their very eloquent remarks on behalf of this bill and the prior bill. I want to just make a couple additional points. One is that I don't believe there's any inorganic issues in this bill. We are not, this bill is amending an existing law. I think it's completely within the realm of the legislature to do that. This bill is not trying to amend any executive order. We will leave the executive orders to the governor and whatever she wants to do with those things. This also does not change the amount that's going to be paid. It puts no further impediment before the governor of finding additional amounts, or any 37.5 million, I'm not sure where that amount came from, but that amount, if that's what it takes for something else. But this bill puts no such impediment in front of the governor. It removes the impediment. It's the goal of this bill to remove every single impediment that has been cited so far. Some might be cited afterward, but, you know, I pray that that's just not the case. There should be no more reasons for delay. Again, this bill is going to amend an existing law. Because if that law created any impediment, then by all means, I think we're all united that we want to remove those impediments. It says that, this bill says that the original law, that has not been repealed, can be implemented without a long list of requirements, and it authorizes the Director of Revenue and Taxation to determine what she needs. With that said, Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to place, I mean, to add, Senators Telo and Senators Nelson as co-sponsors of this bill.
Thank you, Speaker Trelawney. On the motion to add co-sponsors, are there any objections? Motion passes.
I'd like to again thank my co-sponsors, Senator Moylan and Senator Son Augustine, and the Committee on Appropriations for their quick action on this bill, and my colleagues for their standing in support of this bill as well, and for all of our efforts together to get this money to the people of Guam, to get it there as efficiently and quickly as possible, and hopefully, without any further delay. And so again, and I, you know, I want, I want to say to the people of Guam just one more time, I am sorry that you had to wait this long, and I am sorry about all of the confusion that has been put in front of you. And I truly am sincere when I say, I will do whatever it takes, I will work with the governor, I will work with everyone that it takes to get this money to these people. And so, again, in good faith, I hope that that will happen. So again, I would like to make a motion to place this bill on the third reading.
On the motion to place Bill 164-36 in the third reading file, no objection, motion passes.
We have exhausted our second reading file. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized. Oh, before, yes, Senator Nelson, you are recognized. Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm considering a motion, since neither of these bills in third reading file had any amendments, but before doing so, I request that we allow the clerk a brief recess in order to put together the bills.
All right, Senator Nelson, on that motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion, since we did not have any amendments for these bills, if we can just move forward without engrossing.
All right, on the motion to move to the third reading and vote without engrossment, is there any objection to that motion? Hearing no objection, motion carries. We will now take a one-minute recess for the clerks to upload the bills to the third reading folder. Resolutions Number 54-36 COR Received by: Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Amanda L. Shelton, Frank F. Blas Jr., Clinton E. Rogel, Jose Pito Trelawney, Joe S. San Augustine, V. Anthony Ada, Mary Camacho Torres, Christopher M. Duñez, Therese M. Trelawney, Sabina F. Perez, Talina Cruz Nelson. Relative to respectfully petitioning the United States Congress to enact legislation removing the filing deadline for the Guam World War II Loyalty Recognition Act Claims Program. Rock call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Excuse. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tai DeGui. Senator Tai DeGui, aye. Senator Trelawney. Speaker Trelawney. Speaker Trelawney, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, excused. Resolution Number 54-36 COR Received by: James C. Moylan, V. Anthony Ada, Christopher M. Duñez. An act to amend Sections 2C, 2D, 1, 3, 4, 5, and 6 of Public Law 35-136, and Sections 1D, 2A, 2B, 4, 5, and 6 of Exhibit A of Public Law 35-136, and to repeal Section 2D2 of Public Law 35-136 relative to amending provisions of the Recovery Income Support and Empowerment RISE Program of 2021, including increasing the amount of the benefit, removing certain requirements to apply, amending the authorized budget, and extending the deadline for the payout by six months. Rock call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Excuse. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tai DeGui. Senator Tai DeGui, aye. Senator Trelawney. Speaker Trelawney. Speaker Trelawney, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, excused. Resolution Number 54-36 COR Received by: Terese M. Trelawney, James C. Moylan, Joe S. San Augustine, Tallo T. Tai DeGui, Talina Cruz Nelson. An act relative to amending the Recovery Income Support and Empowerment RISE Program of 2020, to remove impediments to the issuance of payments to eligible Guam residents during the state of public health emergency due to the coronavirus disease COVID-19 pandemic. Rock call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Excuse. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Trelawney. Speaker Trelawney. Speaker Trelawney, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, excused. Resolution Number 54-36 COR Received by: Terese M. Trelawney, James C. Moylan, Joe S. San Augustine, Tallo T. Tai DeGui, Talina Cruz Nelson. An act relative to amending the Recovery Income Support and Empowerment RISE Act of 2020 to remove impediments to the issuance of payments to eligible Guam residents during the state of public health emergency due to the coronavirus disease COVID-19 pandemic. Rock call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Excuse. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tai DeGui. Senator Tai DeGui, aye. Senator Trelawney. Speaker Trelawney. Speaker Trelawney, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, excused. Resolution Number 54-36 COR Received by: James C. Moylan, V. Anthony Ada, Christopher M. Duñez. An act to amend Sections 2C, 2D, 1, 3, 4, 5, and 6 of Public Law 35-136, and Sections 1D, 2A, 2B, 4, 5, and 6 of Exhibit A of Public Law 35-136, and to repeal Section 2D2 of Public Law 35-136 relative to amending provisions of the Recovery Income Support and Empowerment RISE Program of 2021, including increasing the amount of the benefit, removing certain requirements to apply, amending the authorized budget, and extending the deadline for the payout by six months. Rock call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Excuse. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tai DeGui. Senator Tai DeGui, aye. Senator Trelawney. Speaker Trelawney. Speaker Trelawney, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, excused. Bill Number 75-36 COR Received by: Terese M. Trelawney, James C. Moylan, Joe S. San Augustine, Tallo T. Tai DeGui, Talina Cruz Nelson. An act relative to amending the Recovery Income Support and Empowerment RISE Act of 2020 to remove impediments to the issuance of payments to eligible Guam residents during the state of public health emergency due to the coronavirus disease COVID-19 pandemic. Rock call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Excuse. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tai DeGui. Senator Tai DeGui, aye. Senator Trelawney. Speaker Trelawney. Speaker Trelawney, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, excused. Resolution Number 54-36 COR Received by: Terese M. Trelawney, James C. Moylan, Joe S. San Augustine, Tallo T. Tai DeGui, Talina Cruz Nelson. An act relative to amending the Recovery Income Support and Empowerment RISE Act of 2020 to remove impediments to the issuance of payments to eligible Guam residents during the state of public health emergency due to the coronavirus disease COVID-19 pandemic. Rock call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Excuse. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tai DeGui. Senator Tai DeGui, aye. Senator Trelawney. Speaker Trelawney. Speaker Trelawney, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, excused. Bill Number 75-36 COR Received by: Terese M. Trelawney, James C. Moylan, Joe S. San Augustine, Tallo T. Tai DeGui, Talina Cruz Nelson. An act relative to amending the Recovery Income Support and Empowerment RISE Program of 2021, to remove impediments to the issuance of payments to eligible Guam residents during the state of public health emergency due to the coronavirus disease COVID-19 pandemic. Rock call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Excuse. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Excuse. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel, aye. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tai DeGui. Senator Tai DeGui, aye. Senator Trelawney. Speaker Trelawney. Speaker Trelawney, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, excused. Resolution Number 54-36 COR Received by: Terese M. Trelawney, James C. Moylan, Joe S. San Augustine, Tallo T. Tai DeGui, Talina Cruz Nelson. An act relative to amending the Recovery Income Support and Empowerment RISE Act of 2020 to remove impediments to the issuance of payments to eligible Guam residents during the state of public health emergency due to the coronavirus disease COVID-19 pandemic. Rock call. Senator Ada. Senator Ada, aye. Senator Blas.